Three sixty-seven. The Lord my shepherd is, I shall be well supplied, since he is mine and I am his. What can I want beside? He leads me to the place where the pasture grows, where living waters gently pass and full salvation flows. If'er I go astray, he doth my soul reclaim. And guides me in his own right way for his most holy name. While he affords his aid, I cannot yield to fear. Though I should walk through this darkness, my shepherd with me there. In sight of all my foes, thou dost my table spread, my cup with blessings overflowed, and joy exalts my head. The bounties of thy love shall crown my following days. Nor from thy house will I remurb, nor cease to sing thy praise. Let's go before the Lord, word of prayer. Most kind and loving heavenly Father, we come before thee feeling our neediness, indeed feeling our nothingness. We know we're not worthy in ourselves to stand in thy presence, even bowed. We pray that thou hast made us worthy through the death of thy Son Christ Jesus. We pray that in his merit and his righteousness we might stand before thee complete. We might look upon thee, our heavenly Father, and thou would look upon us, thy eternal children. We pray that thou gather us together. We pray thus. Thou art my great teacher. Thou would open thy word to our hearts as well as to our minds. Thou would enable us to hear the voice of the Son of God. That thou would grant us thy mercy in thy peace as well as thy grace. It's in Jesus' name we ask. Amen.
Amen.
Let's uh, let's sing on page forty-seven. Oh, number forty-seven, excuse me. Let's sing that as well. I feel like singing one more, number forty-seven. I'm gonna sing this to the new Britten team. Great is the Lord, his works of light, the man our noblest song. Let his ascension, O saints unite, there are harmony of tones. Great is the mercy of the Lord. He gives his children grain fed, and never mind all of his word. He makes his promise good. His Son, the great redeemer, came and sealed his covenant sure. Holy and reverend is his name. His ways are just and pure. They that would grow divinely wise must with his beard begin. Our fair is fruit of knowledge lies See all that?
Yeah, I'm not sure. He's actually going over, but he has his stuff. So I can say. But uh, I think he does something. Oh, he can export it. Unless I'll be good at making this time away. He's not probably gonna come to talk to God, so he won't go. He won't let us call. Change, it's going on right now. Kind of hard to talk to God very closely, so he, he, she says, "Yeah, oh, don't worry." Oh, 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 they were with that.
Hello, Pastor. How you doing, Pastor?
All right.
I thought that people were thirty-two, the guy wants to come over and talk to him.
Okay.
Okay, so he said he's gonna be over, so you know, is everything okay? Yeah. It's a shame that the guy died and there was a shister. We tried, tried to clean up as we could. Uh, did you talk about how you did for Sam or?
No, I was trying to say homicide.
Oh, you're homicide?
Homicide is that. He was catching one in the back of the fifteen minutes.
Okay, I apologize.
All right.
So tell it, tell it. Fifteen minutes, okay?
Right.
All right. Life is great.
That's true, yeah. Oh, Lordy. Here to begin, John chapter one verse one.
Now for about fifty minutes, about.
Let this go get my throat.
Okay, okay.
A little wild. I want us to begin a look at the life and work of Jesus on this earth. We're gonna start here in John, chapter one, verse one. Because it speaks of him here in the first five verses. As he existed in eternity before his incarnation in the flesh. In the beginning was the Word. And the Word was with God, and the Word was God. Now in John's first epistle, he says this, folks. There are three that bear record in heaven, the Father, the Word, and the Holy Ghost, and these three are one. So here he's talking, "In the beginning was the Word." The Word was that manifestation, if you will, of God by which creation was made. The Word was with God, and the Word was God, the same was in the beginning with God, all things were made by him. All things were made by him. And when we go back to Genesis chapter one, we find what? God's faith. God's faith. God said, "Let there be light," and there was light. In the beginning, God created the heaven and the earth. So if all things were made by him, and God created the heaven and the earth, let us mark it down and make it sure and certain, and keep us all, keep this in mind as we look every day about him, that he is the eternal God. He is the eternal God. This Word was God. The earth was without form and volume, and darkness was upon the face of the deep, and the spirit of God moved upon the face of the waters. And God said, "Let there be light," and there was light. Verse six, "And God said, 'Let there be a firmament in the midst of the waters.'" Verse nine, "And God said, 'Let the waters be gathered together.'" Verse eleven, "And God said, 'Let the earth bring forth grains.'" Verse fourteen, "And God said, 'Let there be lights in the firmament.'" Verse twenty, "And God said, 'Let the waters bring forth abundant.'" Verse twenty-four, "And God said, 'Let the earth bring forth the living creature after his kind.'" Why do I emphasize that God said? Because mankind wants a silent God. Mankind can stand a God that's out there or up there somewhere and doesn't interfere in his so-called free of things. For the God who speaks, the God who acts, that's more, that's more than the mind of man wants to acknowledge. That's why the Scripture calls him the Word, the logos of God. Because in this creative act, God spoke. He made all things. Without him, there's not anything made that was made. So if it was created, it was this Word who created it. It was this Word who was with God and who was God. In him was life, and the life was the light of men. And the light shinet in darkness, and the darkness comprehended it not. All things were made by him, and then it says, "In him was life." Well, of course, in him was life, he was God. That is obvious. But this is a different life than just the eternal life of God. This life was the light of men. Scripture tells us that God alone hath immortality. Scripture also tells us that God is life. God is life, not that he just created life, not that he has life, he is life. And I believe that that is a symbolic language there, signifying the purity of God. Showing that he is above all, and that he transcends all, and that he cannot be bound by anything on this earth. That he is light, absolute light. And this light shined in the darkness. When there was darkness, there's light. And the darkness can't comprehend it. Now that word comprehend means, can have one of two meanings. Can mean the darkness couldn't overwhelm it. Because that light is superior to the darkness. Indeed darkness, the darkness that is there by nature, mankind is in darkness by nature, didn't just get there somehow. The Scripture tells us in the forty-fifth chapter of Isaiah in the seventh verse, God himself said, "I formed the light, I create darkness." So that which was created could not overwhelm the Creator. Mankind gets the idea that he can tell God what to do. He's gonna pray, and God's gonna do exactly what he wants him to do. Absolutely not. He may pray, but God's gonna do what he eternally purposed to do before the foundation of the world. There's nothing there that you can do to change the mind of God. He is in one mind. And who can turn him for what his soul desireth, even that he doeth. The other meaning of comprehend is understand, isn't it? I don't comprehend what you're saying. Well, man doesn't comprehend the light. Man doesn't understand it because it's contrary to his nature. Men love darkness rather than light. Why? Because their deeds are evil, and that's you, that's me, that's everyone by virtue. Scripture plainly tells us, "In thy light we shall see light until the light of God is shined upon you." Nothing. I mean absolutely nothing is gonna be for you except the darkness. You can't see the light. No, darkness is all that's there. Darkness. I formed the light, I create darkness, I make peace, and I create evil. Lord says he does all of these things. The Word went forth, speaking the creation into existence. God said, and it was, and he looked upon every minute of it and saw that it was what? Good. Now, I've used this analogy, this example before, and I'll probably use it again. I don't know what good a chigger is. If God created, if he said it was good, so it is. And that's enough. That's what we have to understand, and that's what we can't understand. Why you think mankind came up with theories like evolution? To write God out of his own creation because men love darkness rather than light because their deeds are evil. In him, in this Word, was life. And the life was the light of men, and the light shinet in darkness, and the darkness comprehended it not. The darkness couldn't understand it, so it, as it were, stayed away from it. The darkness tried to overwhelm it, and it couldn't. It was the light of God for his people. Yeah. Move down a few verses with me for just a few moments. Verse fourteen of John chapter one. And the Word, the same Word that was in the beginning, the same Word that was with God and was God, the Word, not a Word, and neither is it a God. The Word was with a God, and the Word was a God, absolutely not. The Word was with God, and the Word was God. And this Word was made flesh. Made flesh. Tells us elsewhere in the New Testament that he was made in the likeness of sinful flesh, yet without sin. See, it was real flesh, though it was sinuous. The Word was made flesh in the womb of man, and he dwelt among us, and we beheld his glory, the glory as of the only begotten of the Father, full of grace and truth. The Word was made flesh. The eternal God took on himself humanity. That's what flesh means in this instance. Humanity. This is how Paul wrote this, speaking very similarly in the book of Colossians in chapter one. Christ is the image of the invisible God. In Hebrews, he said he was the expressed image of his person. "The firstborn of every creature, for by him are all things created that are in heaven and that are in the earth, visible or invisible, whether they be thrones or dominions or principalities of powers." All things were created by him and for him, and he is before all things. He's speaking of that, "In the beginning was the Word," speaking of that same time period. Somebody might look at it and say, "Well, what place is that beginning?" I don't care where you put it. Is it the beginning of the creation of the world? Is it the beginning of when God determined? It doesn't matter because in the beginning, the Word was. Past tense, it is already been, and here, he is before all things, and not only that, by him all things consist. By him all things consist. In the book of Hebrews, Paul tells us he opposes all things by the word of his power. In this one, this incarnate Word, in this Word that was made flesh in the verse of Jesus, in him, and in him alone, all things consist. Verse nine of chapter two of Colossians, it says, "For in him dwelleth all the fullness of the Godhead bodily, all the fullness of the Godhead bodily." Verse, chapter one, verse nineteen, "It pleads the Father that in him should all fullness dwell." In him dwells all the fullness of God in a bodily form. Because he was a eternal Word. He was the one that was before all things. God and mess God. And we beheld his glory, the glory as of the only begotten of the Father, full of grace and truth. Full of grace. Grace has been defined many times as unmerited. unmerited favor. Not sure that really expresses the whole of it. More than that. It's more than just unmerited favor because grace is favor given to one who deserves not only just no favor, but who deserves wrath. It's not just unmerited. It's favor to those who have been enemies. Well, I'm not God's enemy. You can handle it. Well, I'm not God's enemy. What are we talking about? Yes, you are. You ever do a wicked work? You ever sinned? You become God's enemy. The carnal mind is enmity against God. Why? Why, Paul? Go to Romans and read it. For it's not subject to the law of God, and neither can be. Now, that's tough for the natural man to understand. Think about it. Do you center? Well, I'm just doing the next guy. Yeah, you are. You are a saint. He is full of grace. And it's not for himself. It's for his children. It's for his people. It's for the ones that were given to him before the foundation of the world by his Father. It's full of grace to the people that don't deserve it. It's full of favor to his enemies. And that's what, uh, that's what Paul also said in Romans. When we were young enemies, in two times, Christ died with a gun. See, he didn't die for the Pharisee. He didn't die for the one who thinks that they're good enough. He didn't die for the ones who think they can do what's necessary. He didn't die for them. He died for children. He died for those whom were given to him before the foundation of the world, and he's full of grace to them. He's also full of truth. You and me, we're liars. David said it. I said, "In my haste, all men are liars." It was true. We come forth from the womb and speak of lies. Not him. He's true. Truth incarnate. On the way, the truth and the light. You say what you want to about him being the truth. He's not a truth. He's the truth. He's the only truth. All outside of Him, all outside of what He reveals cannot be called, termed truth. As He is the One who was with God and was God. So He has the complete fullness of truth within Him. And He has that not because He needs it, but He has it to distribute to His children who came down full of truth to teach them. And He opened His mouth and talked to many things, didn't He? And the Son of God, He read from the book of Isaiah. And then He said, "This is the Scripture for you." Didn't you hear? He taught, not as the scribes in the Pharisees, but as one who had authority. You know, why that long, don't you? Because he did have authority, the authority of God in that human form. The authority of God in that fleshly body. He gives his children a prayer. He leads them into all truth. Somebody says, "Well, he ain't around anymore." Well, yes, he is. The dragon couldn't hold him. He was sinners. There's nothing in it that death could hold. He rose from the dead the third day. Rose from the dead. And He still distributes His burdens and His truth to His children. Where are they all, I wonder? They're sheep. They hear His voice. They come to Him, and He teaches them by His Spirit. He teaches them. This is the eternity, the eternity of the world, the Word that made flesh, the Word that dwelt among men. If the Lord wills, very enabled continue to stand before you, I hope to look at that birth and then the life of the Lord Jesus, not just from this gospel of John, but from all of them. We can look at it and learn. Yes, Jesus has to reveal the truth to you, but it's also revealed in His Word that He inspired, that He gave. And it's also proclaimed in the good news that goes forth, that He came not for Himself, but as the Savior of sins. He came as the One who would be Redeemer of His people. None of them. None of them. Only Jesus. Let us close by, in the black Psalm book, singing Psalm sixty-seven. I think it'd be a fitting benediction the Lord give us grace to get through it. Lord bless and pity us. Shine on us with Thy face. That the earth Thy way and nations all may know Thy saving grace. Let people praise Thee, Lord. Let people all Thee praise. Oh, let the nations be glad in songs their voices raise. Thou justly people judge. How on earth rule nations all? Let people praise Thee, Lord. Let them praise Thee, both great and small. The earth her fruit shall yield. Our God shall blessings sing. God shall us bless. Men shall hymn fair unto earth's most sin.